All right, good evening. I officially called to order the July meeting of the Foreign City Planning Commission and behalf of all the commissioners, I want to thank everyone here. It's good to get us all back together. We've had about a year and a half of Zoom and we're really just kind of connecting all again. And before we get started, I just want to tell everyone, we heard some really sad news tonight about Mr. McCove's daughter who recently passed away. And I just want him and everyone to know that our heart goes out to you and we hold our prayers up to you and wish you the best. I can't imagine what that's like. Oh, you just recently lost a sister. I am so sorry. Wow, I'm sorry to hear that. Those in the audience, you might not know this, but we've become quite a family. You know, we work hard up here and you know, it's not an easy job and certainly the pay is very minimal. But, but yeah, but we are a family and we love each other. And yeah, sometimes we have, we don't always agree and that's the way it should be. If we all agree, we'd be just a bunch of lambs running down, running down the road. So please work with us tonight and we certainly look forward to all being back together. Before we get started, I would like to have the invocation and who would like to, Mr. McCove, how the feeling, thank you very much.
Heavenly Father, we thank you on this day. Heavenly Father, we thank you in all that you do in our lives. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless each and every one of the commissioners here tonight and all other individuals who are viewing and may be present with us. Heavenly Father, we ask that you can bless our hearts, bless our minds and allow us to make the decision for the requests that are made that are proper and decent in your sight. We do this in the name of our city. We do this in the name of our communities. In your Son Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. You've got a gift, Mr. McCove. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of last month's minutes. Thank you. That, we took care of that very quickly. Any discussion? Always a favor, say aye. Like signs, nay. The ayes have it. Okay. Next item on the agenda is PC 2021-22. We have had this before us on two occasions and I will turn it over to staff. Staff report, please.
And if it's okay, I'm not going to rehash through line by line what our proposed ordinance was. We did go over that last month at the meeting, but I did want to just reiterate that the, you know, this did stem from the rezoning of the property on Oakland Avenue at the corner of Oakland Avenue and Maxwell Street. It did go to city council for their approval to move forward with the rezoning of that parcel. However, there were questions about the commercial reuse district and the uses that were allowed there and, and what could and couldn't go there. So it was, the issue was sent back to Planning Commission to reconsider or review some of these uses in the CR district. So staff did research other zoning ordinances. We pulled from our own zoning ordinance from other sections and we had the goal of, you know, looking at potential nuisances or conflicts between commercial uses and adjacent neighborhood uses like residential as well as embedded parts and things of that nature. So we then drafted up or put forth some of these, I guess, rules and regulations into a format that Planning Commission could then review and use as kind of a cherry pick list to look at what they felt could benefit in the commercial reuse district or maybe was too excessive and maybe had some unintended consequences throughout the district. But what we put forth was a guideline and some, I wouldn't go so far as to call them recommendations, but just some guidelines and suggestions for Planning Commission to go through. We did present that at the last meeting and, you know, Planning Commission felt that they needed some more time to review this. So it was deferred until this meeting. So we did in the meantime, look at some other, I think, go to my notes here, you know, some of the issues that came up in last month's meeting were, you know, uses associated with off-premise and on-premise alcohol consumption. You know, private clubs were discussed a fair amount. You know, private clubs are allowed in all zoning districts except for the industrial district. So they would even be allowed in the neighborhood conservation district. And our code defines those as groups and they append them to like YMCA's and, you know, maybe fraternal organizations like a Moose Lodge or an Elk Lodge and even, you know, potentially, you know, a veterans association or a club or a golf club or a tennis club or even a pool that might exist in the neighborhood. So that's the intent of a private club. Our code does, you know, expressly say that a club, a private club for the principal purpose of serving alcohol to its members is not allowed or is not considered a private club. We would consider that a balk under our zoning ordinance. And to go back to the CR district, it is clear as the ordinance now stands without any amendments to it, that a liquor store would not be permitted in the CR district. So in no form or fashion could a liquor store be permitted within the CR district. Nor could a nightclub or a bar, any establishment with the principal purpose of serving alcohol over 50% would be allowed in this district. So that's as it stands right now with no amendments whatsoever. So I just wanted to make that clear to everybody that, you know, if the owners of that parcel or owner of any parcel within the commercial reuse district came to us right now and wanted to put a liquor store in that district, we would not, we could not permit it, you know, without it being rezoned to a more intense use.
And that's the way it is right now.
That's the way it is right now without any, any amendments. So what we did was we did, the Planning Commission asked us to also look at other municipalities and how they handled it. We did look at Greenville, Columbia, Charleston, Spartanburg, and some of these were gleaned from their code, some of what was put forth, the commission denied at the last meeting. And much of their rules and regulations did allow, they were very similar to the uses that are allowed in our commercial reuse. You know, in some instances, the name changed. A lot of, a common name was, you know, neighborhood convenience or neighborhood commercial for these type of districts. Ours just happens to be called commercial reuse. And many of the same uses were allowed such as offices, you know, professional, you know, real estate offices, you know, doctor's offices, not a hospital, but a doctor's office. Convenience stores, grocery stores were allowed, you know, restaurants, eating establishments were allowed. Some of them had kind of like we put into here, hours of operation that, that may limit those conflicts between adjacent residential uses. Greenville had done a good job of putting some of the hours of operation in place and as well as putting buffers in place that would protect adjacent residential uses, but still allowing these uses to occur adjacent to residential. So with that being said, you know, we did put forth this code. I won't rehash it unless we need to, but I did, you know, just want to reiterate that, you know, as it stands right now, and none of this proposed ordinance would allow a liquor store to go in there. So if no changes are made to the commercial reuse district, a liquor store would not be allowed there. A private club would be allowed there, but it's currently allowed in residential areas, in commercial areas, you know, throughout the city. So, you know, nothing proposed in this ordinance changes that either. So I just wanted to make that clear because there was a lot of discussion around that last week. And we do want to take a look at this and, you know, while we aim to protect residential areas and adjacent residential uses, we also need to look at, you know, unintended consequences of maybe making a zoning designation too stringent because it does affect areas all over the city. So, you know, you know, you look at individual parcels as to whether they would need to be truly rezoned or not, but we need to look at a change to the zoning ordinance as affecting parcels that are zoned this all over the city. Common areas in the city that are zoned commercial reuse involve a lot of like Coit Street in the Temrock Park neighborhood, Evans Street in the corridor leading out of downtown until you get down to just before King Cadillac. That's, a lot of that area is zoned commercial reuse. There's a few spots along Oakland Avenue that are zoned commercial reuse and it's kind of that transition area where you can have some light commercial in between, you know, in those residential corridors between the heavier commercial and the residential. So it's kind of that buffer area, that transition where the commercial ratchets down in intensity before you get to a neighborhood. So that's the thought of this. So with that being said, I'm going to conclude my report because we didn't, we didn't rewrite anything because I think Planning Commission just needed some time to reflect upon the, because it was a lot of information to digest at the last meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. I would like it, like to open it up to the commissioners to, if you have questions regarding the staff and Mr. Dudley's comments there.
You've got a public hearing.
I'll get to that, but I was going to give, normally we have a chance to pose questions to staff before we open the public hearing and I just didn't know if anybody had any questions regarding what he has reiterated. We did get a full report last month and really the purpose of it being here today is we actually just needed to think about it and bring it up again this month. And so here it is in our lap again. So if there are no questions, I'll open the public hearing portion of this.
I've got a question.
Okay.
If, okay, if we do anything, this land stays like it is. So what that mean, is this?
Right now, the only condition that would be placed on essentially the, for Oakland Avenue, because that's what we're all thinking about here, for that use, they currently have a convenience store there. It's in an older building. It's, they need to repair it, but under the current code, they cannot repair it. But they are grandfathered in under their old use, so they can continue to operate that as, as proposed. If they were to get zoned to commercial reuse, the only, the only real condition that would be placed on them is that they, they couldn't exceed 10,000 square feet in gross floor area. Now, they wouldn't be able to do that anyway because many of the lots in these commercial reuse areas are smaller lots. So they can only, you know, with all of the parking, there are buffering requirements in place because there's, there are residential uses adjacent to it. I believe they have to put a 10-foot buffer in with, you know, vegetative screening. Once they put all that in place, they are limited in the size they can put on this lot anyway, but that's the only real restriction. So they would be allowed to continue that use there and potentially redevelop the site, you know, with a new building. But when they do that, they would have to meet all of the current codes of the Unified Development Code, all the parking requirements, landscaping requirements, ingress egress requirements, as well as buffering requirements. So they, they would have to do a fair amount of modernization and landscaping to the site just to bring it up to code when they redevelop.
And another question. Okay, I noticed there's something redoing the store, but they got all that land, what are they going to do with the rest? You know, that's my interest, what are they going to do with, if they build a store, what are they going to do with the rest? You know, what's going on there? And then you keep saying a private club, you know, what, you know, I want to know what, what else going in front of the car?
They could put anything that would be allowed under the zoning code. So, and I can go through those uses. You know, right now, under the commercial reuse district, they could put, you know, a school building, a church, they could do a private club, which like I said, they could do that in any zoning district. They can put, let me, my next slide here, they could do retail, personal services. So they could do like a nail salon, a barber shop. They could do a light retail, like a, like a clothing store or, you know, a lot, very light retail could go in there as well as the convenience store use or a small grocery store. They could put professional or medical offices there. They could do restaurant with no drive-in. So it couldn't be a drive-in restaurant, it could only be a, you know, a walk-up or a sit-down restaurant. And that's about it. It's, it's still fairly limited in that zoning designation. So those are the uses that would be allowed.
Any other questions, staff?
You said they could have a private club there. Would that private club, I'm assuming it would be granted a liquor's license?
It, the, in our zoning code, in backup, because I'm going to read it to you, the, I'll read you our definition of a private club.
Do that.
I can read it.
Okay.
They don't allow to the playground.
Okay. If I can bring that up to the public hearing.
We'll give you a chance to speak.
Yep. A, a private club according to our zoning code means organizations or associations of persons for some common purpose such as a fraternal, social, educational, or recreational purpose, but not including clubs organized primarily for profit or to render a service which is customarily carried on as a business. Examples of private clubs include, but are not limited to 4-H clubs, veterans organizations, boy scout, girl scout facilities, elk lodges, YMCA, YWCA, private community clubhouse houses, golf clubhouse houses and fraternities and sororities that do not include residential facilities. And it says, goes on to say, the phrase "private club" does not include organizations with a principal purpose of serving alcohol and beverage, beverages to its members or others. So it doesn't totally exclude alcohol as in like a golf club, for instance. You know, there's a golf clubhouse associated in a residential neighborhood associated with the, with the golf course. They often have a restaurant associated with that and maybe a bar in that instance. It wouldn't exclude that, but it can't be principally for that purpose. If, if it's part of it, that would be okay, but it can't be more than, or principally, which would get into your 50% rule. So it would have to have another use. And it can't, and it also can't be carried out as a business, you know? It really needs to be, you know, it talks about that too, in that it can't be carried on as a business. It needs to be, you know, for some nonprofit or not-to-profit reason. A lot of time, I think golf clubhouse houses are set up to support the golf course.
So would that rule out a nightclub?
You, you couldn't have a nightclub who is principally involved in serving alcohol.
Okay.
That's how they would make their money and that would not be allowed.
Okay.
And if they, and if it evolved into that, then it would become a policing issue. And I know our police often coordinate with SLED to seek help with establishments such as.
Just trying to get some clarity.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then I have a question. Okay, so if I'm clear, what we ask, what you're asking us to do is to vote on the property being rezoned as commercial reuse and it's going to be in the same, under the same guidelines with no improvements, there won't be any changes made to the structure? Is that what we're saying?
Well, I think Planning Commission has already approved and, or sent their recommendation to city council to rezon this to commercial reuse, this particular parcel. What we are bringing back is a change to the zoning ordinance. That's what, that's what's being proposed here is a, is an actual amendment or a change to the code. And all of these yellow highlights that we went over last week are potential amendments that could mitigate some of those conflicts between potential uses, not just this use, but any of those uses I outlined that are, are allowed in there and adjacent properties and, you know, embedded in the neighborhood. So, and this, this wouldn't just apply on that lot, it would apply to all commercial reuse throughout the city. So that's why, I mean, that's why we need to be careful. You know, these are just some things we've plucked from other municipalities. We pulled it from some, some internal to our code that we, you know, adapted over to these uses, especially for the restaurant uses. So, and we outlined, you know, some conditions, some potential conditions for convenience stores, grocery stores and restaurants, since those are some of the most intense uses that would be allowed in this district. But things like hours of operation are dictated in here and, you know, some of those may be too restrictive, you know, which is, which is why I think Planning Commission needed to look over this and, you know, not only think about this site, but throughout the city.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got one question for you.
Ms. Moses?
My thing is this. When we come up here with one subject, I'm going with subdivision now, and you ask for a setback for just that one subdivision. We granted several times that one setback for one, for that particular subdivision. Now, we were talking about, we go, then now I'm going to go down to Oakland Avenue. We are asking about Oakland Avenue. We not asking about the whole CR district. See, we did, what we did, we put the whole CR district in it and we just talking about Oakland Avenue. That's, that's my concern. See, what you're telling us now, that we want to pass something that is going to be in the CR district. We're not talking about this one particular place like we came, we did, when you come up here and want to build a subdivision, you ask for that particular subdivision. So we are talking about just Oakland Avenue, not the whole CR district. That's the way, that's my concern. You made it, to me, you, you put it in the whole CR district. We're not talking about the whole CR district. We're talking about Oakland Avenue.
I understand that.
We're talking about, we're talking about the park. We're talking about the senior citizen building just built there. We're talking about the gathering in North Florence on Oakland Avenue. We're not talking about Evans Street, Pine Street, Pembroke Street. We're talking about Oakland Avenue. That's my concern. You know, we come up here, we, we ask for one particular thing, we get it. Why can't we get just Oakland Avenue rather than the whole CR district?
Our zoning code does not have a mechanism to address a singular site like this. The other subdivisions that were granted special setbacks were in planned development districts. Planned development districts by code are larger common developments and by law, they have to include residential portions and commercial portions, like The Grove is a prime example. I think that's the last one that requested special setbacks. So because they were zoned as a planned development district, they have the opportunity to write their own rules essentially that Planning Commission and city council approves. This is on CR and like hundreds of other parcels throughout the city. So I have no way or no mechanism in my, in my zoning code to isolate that parcel outside of the rest illegally. It would be contractual zoning, which is illegal.
Or spot zoning.
Or spot zoning, which is also illegal. That's right. Because it is such a small parcel and it's not part of a common planned development. McLeod Hospital, that's an old planned development. The mall out at Magnolia Mall, that's an old planned development that back in the day, they used to, they used to apply that without a residential portion, but there were some lawsuits, I believe out of the Charleston area, that changed it so that a residential portion and a commercial portion has to be part of a planned development. It's, it's like when you, you know, it's becoming common around Beaufort and Charleston area where there's a, there's a block of commercial or embedded commercial within a neighborhood that might have a little downtown main street within a neighborhood, but then all the residential is back behind it. So.
Well, he's planning to build a store there, am I right?
That is correct.
Okay, I just want to make up my planings together. I'll go ahead. I'm going to see it public here now.
Thank you, Ms. Moses. I will now open the public hearing portion of this and we, we have a couple of rules and love to have anyone in the audience to come forward. If you come forward, we ask you to give us your name and we'd like to limit it to three minutes. You'd have to come to the podium, so you'll be part of the official record if you'd like to come speak and everything will be addressed to the commissioners and not to anyone in the audience. And we always like to keep it cordial and it has been. And Florence is a great, great city and we never have to worry about those things. So what I will do is I'll open up, anyone that is against or have comments about this request, I do ask that try to keep the, the talking down so we can hear. If y'all, anyone in your group would like to come forward and speak?
Yes, I want to say something.
Well, you have to come forward up here if you'd like to, if you'd like to say something. And if you'll give us your name, sir?
Okay, my name is Rajini Pitera.
Okay.
And I've been in my family in Oakland Avenue in 30 years, that's neighborhood.
You said 30 years?
Yeah, that's my, my family.
Okay.
And I just, I want to renew this in store, but I got this of parking problem and all kinds of stuff. I want to just steady down and put a new building and same, whatever I sell, the same thing, you know? And ABC people in Columbia, right? They got a law, I cannot put over the liquor store, you're not a private club and not in a public club because it's, they got restriction, it's school zone, park, those kind of rules. And I got paper here, I mark up this ABC, you know?
That's from ABC?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to pass it around, Ms. Moses, if you?
You cannot make liquor store, you cannot private club.
One at a time, please. Oh, you got more? Okay.
And I want to make places nice and good, you know?
Yeah.
That's why, these one, and my family's other store, liquor store already over there in my, you know? And I worked with it, that's number 30 years, you know?
One of the commissioners had a question about the adjacent property. Do you, and you, you have every right to do what you can do with that property legally. I think it would help if you, unless it's de-restricted, you're not going to be held to anything you say tonight. Do you have plans for that property, like parking or, do you have any plans for that adjacent piece of property?
Yep. Not right now. Yep, I don't know, we haven't done that, you know?
Okay, uh, and that wasn't really fair of me asking that question, um, because you have the right to build anything on there within code, so. Um, but if you already had plans, it would've been great to, to know. And I understand, uh, you have to, uh, improve your existing business before you can start planning, uh, additional, so. Do any of the commissioners have, um, questions for Mr. Patel? Mr. Patel?
Well, um, you did say that you are not gonna, um, you're gonna keep the business basically the same as it?
Yes.
What it is now. Um, the expansion portion of it is that's just to sell more product of, of what?
Yes, some like more products is not, uh, like, uh, alcohol, it's not a liquor store, it's not, uh, some kind of stuff. There's a, whatever I sell then, the next building I have to renovate, so I put laundry mat.
Laundry mat?
Cross the street, laundry mat is not good, you know? And I put a new machine and all kinds of stuff, you know?
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Patel? Mr. Hill?
Um, Mr. Patel, are you at liberty to disclose how much your proposed capital investment will be? If, uh, if you go through with this renovation?
It's a four to six, okay, laundry mat is three hundred thousand dollar. And store duty at least is six, seven thousand dollar.
Seven hundred thousand?
Yeah, store.
So, that's roughly a million dollars investment?
Yeah.
Um, I got a question.
Okay.
You say you're gonna put a million dollar investment on that corner?
Yeah, something like that.
Oh, you just, you just, you just, you just saying that or you say no? You don't know?
No, it's roughly is that much, you know, because laundry mat and convenience store is almost is eight, nine hundred thousand dollar, you know?
Okay, um, so what kind of an improvement you could do with, uh, traffic in that area?
It's a lot, I, I've been, uh, lot of traffic over there, you know?
Yeah, it's hard to get on Oakland Avenue now without, uh, now, and so you find a?
I'm gonna put the store in backside a little bit, you know, that's why front is parking lot of place and people go easing out, you know?
And, um, what you gonna do with the property on that split brand street, that brand street? That's corner Brandon, uh, that brand is, uh?
It's Rose.
What's the name of it?
Rose.
Rose Street.
Rose.
What you gonna do with that property?
Cross the street?
No, no, it's right behind where you, all that property you bought up there, what you gonna do with the corner of Rose Street?
No, I got a three lots, that's all.
Yeah, this room.
I got four lots, cross the street, one lot is I'm not doing nothing, you know? And three lots make a gather and build store.
Okay, so tell me how much profit you got? From where to where, Oakland Avenue to where?
No, it's not, it's Oakland Avenue, uh, just like Oakland Avenue and just a white building, you see the white building?
The, the tire shop.
Yeah, tire shop, right, that's all, that's the corner, that's all.
So, you don't, he doesn't have that house that was on the corner?
And backside is house land, you know?
Okay, uh, how, what you gonna do for those residents that's next door to you?
No, that's why, that's a, put a store like that, right now we store like that, right? I have to build like that store, you know, and make front is parking lot.
So, if, what I'm talking, what I'm asking you, um, there's a house right beside you, right?
Yeah.
In that, in that lot, there's the family living there.
Yeah.
What are you gonna do to improve that piece of property up in there? There's a vacant lot in there also.
I don't understand correctly.
Can I, we floating off now? Is that where a buffer zone would have the?
It would.
Yeah.
I, I brought up a map while we were discussing. Um, I believe Mr. Patel owns, this is where the existing store is, this is, this is Oakland, this is Maxwell. This is, um, Iowa Jones Park across the street. This is the existing store. This is, um, along Maxwell Street where the, um, tire shop you're talking about.
Yeah.
Um, is, and he also owns this parcel as well, the vacant one. So, the, um, and the house is here that is, that is occupied.
Right.
So, yes, a, a buffer would be required, um, between this house and any development that occurs on that side, uh, under the current code. So, it would have to be completely, uh, vegetatively buffered, um, between that property and, and the state's infrastructure. Uh, but I believe his proposal, um, was to use both of those lots for redevelopment, which, which would, um, accommodate parking, um, as well as the building development. Um, because currently, um, you know, he's actually using the right of way for parking. You know, that's how, that's how that place has existed for years. But when he redevelops, you know, all of this outside of his property, um, he couldn't utilize that anymore for, for parking, he would have to get all of his parking on his property for, for off-street parking. So, it, it would change, it would change that corner a fair amount in that it would bring it off of, you know, the right of way and, and onto his actual property, so.
Freezing the floor on that corner.
It, it, that's right, that's right.
I mean, remove the congestion of the people bargaining on the right of way.
That's right, in order to?
Patel, you said your plan would be to move, to move it from running perpendicular to horizontal to the street, which would free up that frontage area, which I think is what you're referencing here.
Right now is a struggle for people, you know, they back up, it's backup street, right?
Right, the street.
Yeah, that's small park. And that's, I've been store, that's part of this side, you know, easier going in and out.
That helped a lot, Mr. Dunn, thank you for pulling that up. Um, Mr. Patel, thank you very much, you know, really appreciate you coming forward. Um, would anyone else like to speak? I may be wrong, but this might be the Honorable Mr. Terry Alexander.
Good evening, good evening, sir. Thank you all for, for this opportunity to, uh, make a few comments about proposal, um, that's taking place here. First of all, I grew up about three blocks from, uh, that area. Family still have property there, still have uncles live up and down Maxwell Street. As a matter of fact, we're trying to do something with that traffic that's going on, with the speed that's going on. Um, couple of questions, and number one, and, and directly to you all, because, but it's direct, it's to the property.
I understand, thank you, that's what we refer.
And number one, uh, there's some tanks down there. I remember when Miss Chris had a gas station right there. So, there's some old tanks in that ground as we speak that was there when I was a little child.
Okay.
So, I'm wondering what's gonna become of that, are they gonna clean up that lot, because right now it's bad. Uh, where that cement is, if y'all notice that cement?
Yeah.
Those are tanks.
Yes, that's right.
Gas tanks that sits there. And I'm, 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 I'm sure that this Planning Commission, I'm not gonna allow that to go on and to do that renovation and not take care of those gas tanks that's probably corroding in that ground as we speak. So, that's an environmental issue that's gonna need to be taken place. Whether this is granted or not, I hope it's not, but whether it's granted or not, those tanks need to be removed. I don't know whose responsibility is it, I don't know if it's the owner's responsibility, what, but those tanks need. And number two, I don't, I'm sure that none of us in here would want that type of, um, service. I don't know, he said, first of all, he said if he wouldn't know what he's gonna put on it, but as the conversation progressed, he's gonna put a laundromat there, so I'm not sure what he's gonna put there. And as I said earlier, at one point, he didn't know, because you raised the question. And as the conversation began, he said, well, I'm gonna put a laundromat, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. So, I think if we would have a, more clarity as to what he's gonna be able to do with that property, I would feel more relaxed, but right now, I don't feel relaxed at all. Number one, those tanks still down in that ground, and number two, some uncertainty about what's gonna happen in that, on that property.
Uh, Mr. Alexander, hold on, please, any questions for Mr. Alexander? Mr. Hill?
I'll make a statement.
I'm calling you, Mr. Alexander, I'm sorry.
That's cool, that's cool.
Be disrespectful.
I just purchased some commercial property that has tanks in it. And, um, the property came with protection from Cyclone DHEC called Super B.
Called what?
Super B funding. And all it?
Super fund, superb.
Superb. And all it requires is the property owner to put down ten thousand dollars in expenses and then the state will kick in up to a million dollars for mediation of, of tanks, so.
Mediation mean that it's one vouch suit?
Meaning that it's, it's clean, it's considered, it's monitored until it's taken care of. It's monitored and then up to a million dollars in repairs.
What?
The property owner just needs to kick in ten thousand. And, um, I think it's, it's available and the, whoever owns the property just needs to go apply the DHEC.
Well, my concern is that whether, whether it's available or not, my concern is that it's, it's messing up the ground, it's been down there for years. I wanna know whether or not it's safe.
I mean, D?
I wanna know whether or not it's safe in that ground. You know, I wanna know, have they had to check to see whether it's safe, is anything leaking out there in those ground, in those water that's going into those communities, those tables?
Well, I can answer, I'm, I'm in the gasoline business and, and, um, I can promise you the DHEC knows.
Yeah, DHEC does know, yeah.
They, they're well aware of any old underground storage tank, I mean, they know about it, so. Most likely, if it's there, then it's still there, then, then there's, there's not an ongoing issue with it or going concern, I would imagine the tank is empty, there's, they're not allowed to leave an abandoned tank.
Well, I don't know.
With product tennis, and, uh, you either have to pull it out of the ground, you have to fill it with sand, I mean, there's certain requirements you have to meet, and I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, but I'm, I understand it, but, but you know, you're talking African American community, very poor community, thirty, forty, fifty years ago, when DHEC was not even in existence.
Right.
You see what I'm saying, so I'm, I'm talking about what happened way back.
Right.
Because we looking at some other property where, where they had a Creosote plant.
Right.
And back then, when it came into existence, DHEC was not. So, environmental issues in African American communities are very prevalent. And I'm sure that there's some issues there, maybe DHECs, they're under the Grand Father Claus, I don't know, but I think that's something we need to take a look at. You know, because when, when, when I was growing up, there was no DHEC.
Yeah, one thing is, um?
So, there was no, there was no entity that they secured African American communities.
Yeah.
It wasn't there.
You know, one thing that is, um, interesting about this is those tanks are so old and gasoline evaporates even when there are spills. Um, the way they remediate is they typically pull the soil out, pile it up, and it evaporates and they put it back in there. Um, if it's been there for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, uh, first of all, no one typically leaves fuel in the tanks. And I, um, you'll be surprised at the fuel tanks that are still in the ground around residential homes uh, that used fuel oil, uh, before better processes and uses came into effect. Uh, DHEC is, is very cautious of these kind of things. Um, uh, I, I would say that our discussion tonight has to do with, uh, zoning and not really health and concerns about contamination.
Yeah, well, I, I guess my, my point is that, and you absolutely right, my point is that, um, with, with the rezoning, would you consider what's already there? You're taking a piece of property and then changing it. And my concern, and I'm quite sure the neighbors in the communities is concerned too, is what's already there. And when you make those changes, what health impact will it have on that community? That's why I bought up the tanks.
Yeah.
You know? What health impact will it have on the communities? You know, if it is passed, and I pray that it's not.
Well, I think that we're, it's clear that they're improving the traffic situation. Um, and if they do spend eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars, I would think that it would, uh, improve the, the neighborhood and, um, it, it would be investment dollars into the neighborhood. Um, but, you know, again, we can give other, others a chance to speak and?
Thank you.
And thank you very much for coming forward, I appreciate it very much. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Thank you, sir, please come forward. And your name, sir?
Oh, yeah, um, my name is Tim Waters, I live in the city limits of Florence, I live at six oh two Stike Street.
I believe, I know you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I own a property on Rose Street that's pretty adjacent here, there's some other properties. And, um, wow, what a plethora of information. We went from convenience stores to nightclubs to zoning changes.
Well, you should've been here in the last two months.
I've been here, I've been here for the whole time, but, um, many of you, and I'll say, make sure, many of you are appointed by a city council person. So, that means that whatever decision you make, we, the people can't vote you out if you do something that we don't like. So, I wanted that to be said on the record. That you are appointed by a city council person. Usually when a city council person makes a decision that's so paramount to, to the neighborhood, they have to take into consideration the people. Because those are the people that vote for them, but many of these commissions don't have to do that.
Can I make one comment there? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You've got your full three minutes.
And I, and I'll let you give my three minutes. Um, you guys are, you guys have come up with a paramount, a, a, a paramount issue that's in Florence. Before there was any zoning in Florence, they came up with this comprehensive plan to the zone that would make it better to regulate what could be put in a neighborhood and not put in the neighborhood. But in every, when they did these comprehensive plans, McLeod, uh, when they did these other comprehensive plans, the neighborhood plans, any corridor that led to the African American communities was left unzoned, was left unplanned. Was left unplanned. All of Oakland Avenue is a commercial zone. Where the churches, that's a commercial, you go over there now and put a nightclub, a scrap club where the church is, if you bought that property, it is nothing anybody in this room could do. Nothing. So, you've uncovered a paramount problem that we're dealing with in the African American community. I want first going records, Mr. Patel, Mr. Patel, we are not against your store. Your family's store has served our community, it's served our community well. However, in serving our community well, that don't necessarily make it right. We just did a capital investment of a park in our community for our kids. We just did that after twenty to thirty years of fighting to try to get that open. And I want you to think about where you live at, Mr. Moses? Where you live at, Mr. Howard? Where you live at, Mr. Chapman? Where you live at, Mr. Hill? Where you live at, Mr. McCole? Where you live at, Mr. Greg? Would you, what do you want around your house? Do you wanna come home to a convenience store in our community that's gonna turn into a blighted area? If you don't believe me, look at what Tiger Mart has become. The last eight or nine murders that happened in the city of Florence happened around that store. That's exactly what's gonna happen over there in Oakland Avenue. We're not here fighting against any business, I'm the last person in the world to go against some business. I am fighting for my community. I'm fighting for a quality of life. I do not want any more convenience stores around my, I don't wanna take my child to the park and I gotta see a Palmol man sign up there, or vape man sign up there, or buy one for, buy a king cobra for eighty, eighty-nine, a dollar and eighty-nine cents. You have people right now in that park drinking every day, right now. So, just imagine if you go there and make it better for them or you make it more improved. And I'm not saying you have a, you have the choice to do whatever you choose to. I have a choice to fight for my community. That zoning on that park, that zoning near that park does not need to take precedence. You guys can take the precedence that has been unheard of in Florence. You could zone, I was always told there are two ways to zone. You could zone for the business, or you could zone for the community. Rarely do people zone for the community, most of the time it's zoning for the business. Rarely are zones done for the community. Staff did a great job in telling you why it can be there and what can be there. I would like to see what can't be there. And as far as a nightclub being there, you're saying that you can have a nightclub? Once you zone this and nightclub can go in there and they turn a nightclub into a nonprofit, a nonprofit can apply for a liquor license and there's nothing you can do about it. Even now, where it's zoned at now, I knew that for a fact. So, I'm asking you to think about, it's Sunday afternoon, and you're taking your child to the park, Lucas Park, Cloud Park, and you getting ready to walk across the street. What do you want your child to see? Do you want it to be inundated by advertisement, drink, party, slope? Or do you want them to be inundated with trees? Plants, high quality of life, that is what it's all about. If this store doesn't happen, the best thing that happens is the alcohol and tobacco's gonna go out the neighborhood. No, it's not. There's another store that sells exactly what they sell, less than, I, I stepped in today, sixty-three steps from their door. You can walk and get another beer, sixty-three steps. So, regardless of what they do at their store, there's another store, sixty-three steps. And if you take another hundred and, if you take another thirty steps, it can get you a drink of liquor in my neighborhood. And if you take another seventy-five steps, you can go and drink beer on the outside of a store, on the corner, in that neighborhood. And that's nobody's fault that's in this building. But this group right here can set the precedence and try to change that. Is it right? I'm not sure, I don't possess to have all the answers. I'm probably the last person in the world that needs to be up here trying to defend this. But I know I'm fighting not for me, I'm fighting for my generation, generation, generation. The way that these stores were ran in the past, they're not run like that anymore. They don't care if your child's seven years old or eight years old, they'll give them a vape. Not saying that they will do that, but they are, there are instances that they are, it's there. It'll be right there. I've got twelve kids coming from Williams School when they cross that street. They gonna go in that store and if they money right, they gonna get a vape. If they come late enough at night, they gonna get a Lucy. That mean a cigarette that you can buy at the pack. That you know, if you don't know, that's what happens at many of these stores and that's what we're trying to find in our community. Can we address all these issues? No. However, what we can do.
If you close.
I got about a minute. I I kept my time, sir.
No, you don't, but I'll give you.
What we can do, sir, and I understand what we can do is we've got a chance, you got a chance to change some of the things in Florence that have never been addressed before. You know why council keeps passing this back to you? You know why they keep, you know why this keeps passing back and passing back? Nobody wants to address the elephant in the room. Many of our African American streets are zoned this way and something needs to be done. So if you got any questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions?
I I appreciate what you're saying and and you made several good points and and I couldn't argue with them, but. Many of the things that you said are available right now, correct?
When you say available right now in that in that community.
Where where Mr. Patel is operating now.
Yeah, they they.
Have been for thirty years. Management of business, please don't speak.
Thirty-five, thirty-five years are wrong.
Do it exactly what you're describing.
Thirty-five years are wrong, don't make it right. Be the change agent, Mr. Howard. Be the change agent. Be the one to say no more, no moss. Vote for it, vote against it. Let's stand up together.
Well, I I I'm I'm hearing you and I've got my.
That's all I want to ask. That's all, that's all you can ask.
But I wanted to just make that point that much of what you described has been going on for thirty-five years. And um these gentlemen are, well, I I don't think this is probably the appropriate.
I want to hear what you say. Could you make some good points, sir? Make some good points.
Well, the 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 point that that I make and what we try to do is a community and what we try to do is a commission. Is uplift the community and make decisions that are beneficial to the community as a whole. And you have a point of view, which I understand and respect. The property owners have a point of view as well.
Yes, sir.
And I think the thing that causes me the most heartburn, if that if that's the right way to say it. Is that these gentlemen are willing to invest a million dollars into that community. To take a dilapidated, old, dark. Some might say scary building after dark and 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 shine a light on it. And make it nice and new. And welcoming to the community with their own money, risking a lot of their own money. But but here's the thing. They're not recreating the wheel. They're not asking to sell something they're not already selling. All they're asking is let us improve the community, let us improve that street, let us improve that property. So that we can sell bread, we can sell milk, we can sell candy, we can sell Pepsi Colas. We can sell any number of things, hundreds and thousands of things that appear in convenience stores, which are good. Good for the community. I'm in the convenience store business. My family's been in it for seventy-five years.
What what where's your convenience store located?
All over town.
Are any of them located in the African American parts of the community?
All all over town. Can I finish? Let me finish my point. My point is, and that's the thing that I've had trouble with, is that that several, when they are making a point. It sounds like a condemnation of a convenience store and a convenience store provides a wonderful service to a community.
We're not against that, sir.
Now, we're we're not going to have back and forth, let him speak and then we'll return it back over.
And and all I'm saying is, and what I can't reconcile in my head, is that these gentlemen. Have the ability and the right and have had it for the last thirty-five years to sell whatever it is they're allowed to sell by code. By zone, whatever dictates, whatever law dictates that, they want to spend their hard earned money to make it better, brighter, cleaner. And be allowed to continue doing what they're already doing. I mean, they can continue doing what they're doing right now for forever. I mean, you know, that I mean, there there's no limitation. They can, you know, if they don't, if they're not allowed to rebuild, they just continue going like they're going and it's a. I you know, I don't know how to describe what it is. You you people know it better than I do that live and are from that community. Well, the people that grew up in the community, I mean, you 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 folks have said that we grew up in the community and I I and so I I don't know. The condition of the building as it is. But I my my perception is that it's, it it could stand some improvement in 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 looking better. And and so that's the that's the problem I've got is there's somebody that wants to spend money to do to do better, to make it cleaner, make it nicer and. To do exactly the same thing that he's been doing. And so that's where I'm, that's where my. I'm I'm having trouble.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Um yes, sir.
You brought some good part, but first of all, I don't believe what they're gonna do. I don't believe they're gonna spend any money they say. If they want to spend the money that they're saying then, go get me a, go get me an architecture stamp plan. Go get me some letters from the bank saying that you're gonna spend that much money and show me where you're gonna spend it at and get and hire an ar, hire an engineering firm. That can submit a plan to the city of Florence saying, this is what I plan to do on that site. This is how much it costs and go ahead and try to get a building permit for it. Once you get all that, then I believe you're gonna spend that money because I'll be able to see documentary what you're gonna do. I have not known a community, a convenience, other than you, I don't know where your stores are, sir. I have not known a convenience store located in North Florence, West Florence, East Florence that have put a million dollars on the site to make it better. And then every park, have you, have you been to the store close to Northwest Park? Have you been to the store next to Iowa Jones Park? Have you been to the store next to uh the park in the East Florence?
Mr. Ward, you're interrogating the.
I'm not, I'm not, hold, hold, wait a minute. First of all, I'm not interrogating.
I'm sorry. I am in charge. I'm in charge here. Please understand. I'm in charge. Please don't interrogate the commissioners. We feel your compassion. Lord, we feel your compassion. We understand it. We have to picture and we, I wanted to give you the time you needed and I gave you more than the time. We understand it and I thank you for coming forward and I must ask you to have a seat. Thank you, sir.
Yes, I will allow you to come up. We have to do the same procedure and anyone else that is against this is allowed to come up again, sir. Yes, sir. Good, and your name, Mr. Patel?
My name is Sam, Sam Patel.
Sam Patel.
And whatever he says, we are going to sell the vape there, alcohol there with the seven year case. The thing is, we are going to spend million dollar from our pocket. And if I sell by the low twenty years under or eighteen years under, they take my license. If I'm going to spend million dollar over there, why should I have to sell under twenty-one years children? And read away my license from there and shut down my business. You understand what I'm saying? I'm going to spend million dollar there. And I want to shut down my business to sell few customers under age one twenty-one and run down my business. I want to grow up my business more and more and more, you know? So I don't want to do that to sell under twenty years kids. To vape tobacco or beer because right now the technology is very high. When it comes to buy some things, we need ID. If they don't have ID, my systems, they don't allow nobody to sell under twenty-one years old. To beer or alcohol or vape or tobacco. So there is the rules. If I sell somebody else under the seven or under twenty years. Kids, if they catch me, they can get my license and I I I don't want to do that because I get three to four stores in this around area.
You have more than this store?
Yeah, I get one stores cruisers on ten seventeen Way, Stalington Street. There is far away from, there is one lawn ribbon. I am spending three hundred thousand dollar right now, three hundred thousand to four hundred thousand dollar on that property. To make nice, neat and clear laundry and you can come and see after one month, how is that laundry over there? I spent more than four hundred fifty thousand dollar to build that buildings and putting that equipment. I get the. You want to see the invoice, what is the call of the equipment cost and everything? I get everything's ready. I get approved from the city. The building is almost ready. One month, after one month, I'm going to open that store with the nice laundry that you can use with the apps, phones. However, you want to use it. So when he says he gonna spend three hundred thousand dollar, because right now we are struggling to get the. Permit and build the new stores. Once we ready, I can give you all the proposals with the architects, engineer plants and everything. What is the good location? That is the good location and we are trying to bring that nice stores over there. We don't want to sell nothing over there under the age, whatever he says.
Okay, Mr. Patel, time's up. Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't give Mr. Moses.
I need to ask you one question.
Yes.
And I want you to ask me honest. Do you also lose cigarettes?
Uh no, we never sell losing. If you sell losing cigarette. We never sell losing cigarettes, no one. I get the stores from last seven years. I get record, you can ask and go behind the neighborhood and ask them. Did cruisers number one sell any customers to the losing cigarette? If they say yes, then you can tell me. They're not allowed to sell anybody's to the losing cigarette.
Which one? I've seen it before.
No, no, we don't sell. Some, a lot of people, they say that we don't sell and we don't want to do that.
Okay, you say you got a store in Dollington, that's the store Dollington Street you expanding now?
Yeah, Way Stalington Street. Is it across the street on Provisor?
Yes, that's the store you you you.
I'm making laundry over there.
And what else?
Laundry, that's it, laundry.
Okay, that's go, you go, that big facility, you just go put a laundry man and nothing else.
On that?
Yes.
Yeah, tobacco store.
And what else?
The right side is a laundry and the left side is a tobacco store.
A what store?
Tobacco store.
Mr. Chairman, this, we're off the rails.
Say it again. That is my uncle.
Doesn't sound coherent to the arguments.
Yeah.
The conversation.
I I think we're.
I think he said he owned all these stores because he, I'm trying to put all these stores he say got together. Now, to what he's gonna do on Oakland Avenue. That's what I'm trying.
Mr. Moses, I do have to say.
Okay, I'm through. I'm finished with it because he uh I have.
Thank you, sir.
I'm too with you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. I gave Mr. Patel a chance to come forward. I'll give one more opportunity for someone against it to come forward. If not, I will close. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this. Um thank you all for being cordial. With that said, I will um call for a motion.
I'm not even sure what we're voting.
Okay, um let me say this and we're really not voting. The motion will help us come forward with something. We have already approved this. The city council has not even declined it or uh they sent it back to us, but they have not voted against it. This has been approved by this commission uh two months ago. And right, Mr. Moses voted against it, but it was unanimous, or not unanimous, it was approved. There was this commission sent it forward and Mr. Ward, I'd like to, the thing I wanted to tell you is we are a recommending body. You gave us much more power than we deserve. Uh we are, uh we are appointed by a city council and God bless them. I don't know, I might not like them anymore for being here, but. Either way, you know, our services to the community, uh but we are purely recommending. The fight, the argument, the, everything is really with the city council. And uh if we go, we tie, if we go against it or for it. The discussion is with city council. Um we set no rules or or laws, so. The fact that we have already approved this, uh the fact that the city council came to us and said, okay, try to come up with something that works. I'm not sure if we have found anything that works. I would love to send this back to the city council and say, we can't come up with anything and let the battle be on their side. Because is that something that can be done?
Well, I I think, you know, the code is written is is what's the point. So um you know, obviously your your options are to approve the code as written, deny the code as written, which would maintain the status.
amended, not as, the code has already been written, you've amended it.
That's right, the code is.
And we have not voted on the amendment.
That's right, you're not voted on the amendment, I'm sorry. So you could, you could vote to a approve the code as amended. Deny the code as amended, which which would then maintain our status quo and then that would go back to the city council. As you know, the the and I and I would give them a report on what what happened here. Or someone could make a motion to approve this code as amended in some way or as, you know, with 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 further changes to it. Or obviously it could be deferred with with some direction to staff to address issues or or change this code.
Commissioners, that's our choices. That's what, when I put that forward for motion, you have those choices. You have a question.
Can I ask questions? Okay, because it it's gotten complex, so I really don't even understand where we are. So. Is it, oh, okay, so is it, if we vote, if we vote now with with it, commercial reuse, they could reopen. Okay, we vote like it is right now, they could reopen this property and they could just stay, um continue business as it already was for the last thirty-five years.
Yes.
So then if we don't approve this. Or then are we approved it with as commercial reuse? Are you saying that they can reopen the business with and make the improvements? And then continue business? Is that what we don't?
The the re, the the rezoning and the amendment to the code are are two different.
Yeah, we have two different issues.
So, so the um the rezoning was approved or recommended for approval to city council.
And that was the commercial reuse, right?
That was.
That's what I understand, okay.
As as the code's written today.
Okay.
So which, if if that had been approved at city council, they would be allowed to redevelop according to current development guidelines.
Which we did approve and sent to city council.
That's correct.
Okay.
City council, it, they were not comfortable approving the commercial reuse. They wanted further restrictions put in place on this parcel that would protect residential development. The only way to really accomplish that through our zoning code is through a change of how, of what is and is not allowed. Um or conditional requirements, you know, further restrictions we can put on them through the zoning code.
But by doing that, you also restrict all the other commercial reuse in the city of Florence.
That's right, on Ford Street, second.
And Mr. Moses brought that up. You 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 mentioned that, you know, your concern is Oakland Avenue and we understand that. And you don't necessarily want to restrict every other reuse, uh and that's our conundrum.
Yeah, and I and I I agree with Mr. Moses too. That's my concern is that. Is that we're contemplating making a change to a code for one piece of property that would apply to. I mean, that's my concern.
And one thing I have not had a chance to talk to the city attorney about um that was brought up earlier today is potentially deed restrictions on the property. That would be imposed and and recorded at the courthouse, but I'm I'm not sure about enforcement of deed restrictions. That's that's essentially. Like a restrictive covenants that that's put in a neighborhood that that would restrict what could and couldn't be due, due on a piece of property. However, um I I didn't have a chance to talk to our city attorney about the legalities of that, nor the enforcement mechanism. Because the city typically does not get involved in enforcing deed restrictions on a piece of property unless it directly affects us. And you know, like with easements and utility easements and things of that.
Can I address that? The idea of a deed restriction. The idea of a deed restriction would have to certainly be approved by the owner of the property. The deed could be re- or amended that you currently have that says, and that you would not allow, not only you, but any successors or assigns would not be allowed to put, let's say a liquor store. Whatever, and I, and, and the idea is to limit as many of the nonuses to a deed because you're a property owner, you deserve to have every right. But if you can't get the approval from city council, um, so that you can build a brand new store and invest heavily into that thing, you could say, well, um, Mr. D, Mr. City Attorney and your attorney, I, I'll put a restriction in the deed that will not allow a liquor store or whatever you would and the commissioners and the city council or city attorney would say. And if you sold the property, it would be subject to that restriction in the deed forever, forever. And as long as you own it, it's restricted. Um, and what would happen is any of the, the, the neighbors in the area or any competing businesses say, that property is de-restricted and he's trying to put a, a liquor store there, they can go and sue and say that, um, you're, you're breaking, um, the covenants of, of the deed. But only the owner of the property can put that or amend that, um, that deed. So that was just a suggestion of how we can deal with Oakland Avenue and your property specifically and not touch uh, any of the other, um, commercial reuse in the city of Florence. And it would accommodate, I, I think it would accommodate everyone that is against this, uh, unless you just don't want it to be there at all. Um, unless, uh, the argument, thank you, Mr. Ward. But, and Mr. Ward went thumbs up, that they're not, he's, the argument is not what they do now, it's what the potential is, um, in the future. So that's something y'all can discuss between you and then Mr. Dudley can maybe discuss it with city attorney and see how the city would deal with that and it would not have to be, this, um, this amended, uh, zoning, uh, would not go into effect. It wouldn't affect anybody else in the city and, and it would deal with the issues and concerns of the Oakland Avenue community. That is just one alternative. The al- other alternative is I would love to hand it back to the city council and go home tonight and have a nice dinner. So, um, I say that in jest, you know, we, we, we don't have, um, a solution tonight. So maybe.
Send it back to them.
We should, um.
Send it back to them, no results.
Put it off, yeah, tell them we had no results, put it back in their hands. Or put it off to next month and let Mr. Dudley talk with the city attorney. I would rather put it back in the hands personally.
And, and then, uh, I, I hear you talking about, see, uh, you, you keep saying liquor, we talking about alcohol, beverage, period.
Well, they're gonna be able to sell beer and wine.
But see, that's what, that's what we talking about.
Well, Mr. Ward back there was not against beer and wine themselves.
Huh?
Well, I think we have guesses, but we haven't lost a vote, so they can follow the end.
Right, right. Right, it's, and they, they can sell that for, forever.
Right, the loans that don't tear the store down.
As long as they don't change, as long as they don't change it out of Chris's name.
Well, so you, well, this is becoming an open forum and, and I, I apologize, I, I, I have not led this, um.
They don't have it in their name?
Excuse me?
They don't have the, the beer license in their name?
I, I don't know. Okay. But, you know, um, okay, I, I call for motion to do, I want to put some choices out there and this, you know, the commissioners need to, um, be together on this as to what might be the right thing to do. So that we cannot come up with a, a solution and, uh, send it back to city council. Defer it to next month and give Mr. Dudley a chance to talk with the city manager and let the, um, applicant talk with their attorney and see if they're comfortable with deed restriction. And if the, the city is comfortable with deed restriction where they can't put some of these things there. I, I don't think we're gonna have a very, Mr. Moses, I don't think that the community is gonna be effective of stopping them from selling beer and wine right now. I think they'll continue to sell out of that store.
Miss, what it is, is if this, if this city goes in, condemn that building, which they'd like to do with other places, you know, if I, if I don't own that, they'd have been in there and condemned the building.
Right.
Because the building is falling down.
Right.
As long as they, uh, stay there, they probably stayed there about a couple hours a day because I see many times they're not open at all. I don't, been passing by, I've been checking you out. And they was open about an hour or something, they know that they are there, but the door was open. So they can just maintain what they got there. But the city do their job and go in and condemn the building because it's falling down.
The city will allow them to do a certain amount of repairs without, you know, as long as.
I understand that, I understand that, but.
Mr. Moses, I don't think that you're giving them credit, um, for being rightful business owners.
Well, see, look at Big T.
The who?
Big, see? Big T in the neighborhood, they started that and where is it at now?
I, I don't, I don't know.
It's another story. You know, we can go and talk about, we talking about the things that they had and he's talking about thirty-six years in the community.
Right.
If he was thirty-six, been in community building, the building, Big T would have been, it was, it started after grocery store, I don't know what it is now.
Right.
But see, that's some of their buildings, they, they, they're, they're property owners also.
I understand.
With the thirty-six years, because they, they hadn't been on that corner for thirty-six years, for Chris been there.
Right, Mr. Moses, um.
And then they.
I, I feel like you have a vendetta and I.
I, I just, I just don't, I just don't want, uh.
I understand.
That to my park and to my senior citizens.
You told us.
I don't, and I want that on Oakland Avenue.
Right.
Uh, you want to clean up, I'm tired of hearing the gunshots.
I got you. So I would like for us to stay neutral. That, that's really our job.
Mm-hmm, we neutral.
You have, um, the crosshairs on those guys over there?
Do we know?
You have the crosshairs, you know, the old saying about, you know? But you know, so, but it's not our job to, um, our, our, our job is to, um, be fair to all.
Be fair.
So I will leave it at that and, um, call for a motion.
Move that we defer the matter for, so staff can work it out.
I have a motion to defer, do I have a second? I have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like signs, nay.
Nay.
Alright, it carries, we defer it to next month. Mr. Dudley, we charge you with talking with the city attorney.
We'll be for it all year long.
And, um.
Send the red street back to city council and I make a motion, we send the city council.
Well, we've already passed it and. Okay, um, do we have, we got another thing on the agenda?
One more. This one is hopefully way, way closer.
Alright, this one's gonna be, uh, much more gentleman, thank you very much. Thank you, have a good evening. Okay, um, PC twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, this request is on NC fifteen pending annexation. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
This one is just much simpler, um. This is a single family house located on McKenna Courts and the applicant, um, just wants to be annexed into the city. As you can see, it's already surrounded by cities, it's one of those donut hole fill-in. Water and sewer are currently available, so there will be no space to the city to extend it to them. It's a single family neighborhood, so I'm on NC fifteen, everything around it is. And so, um, it's, the future land use is for neighborhood conservation, so the zoning that is recommended is the NC fifteen as well. So, uh, that concludes staff's report.
Alright, I think this is one we can all smile about and, uh.
Oh, God. I gotta hit it.
Okay, I'll open, close the public hearing for this and, and there's no, just go. I'll call for a motion.
The move.
Have a motion, a second to, uh, to approve any discussion. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like signs? Excuse me?
Make a board of your adjournments.
Okay. Amen, Mr. Moses.